The purpose of my presentation is to summarize the process that we've gone through. Talk a little bit about the involvement of the Planning Commission. My role here in the city, as well as being the city manager, I'm the zoning administrator also. And I, I'm the staff person for the Planning Commission. So as any application comes in, whether it's for a new subdivision, or a new commercial building, or rezoning, site plan, it comes into City Hall and I start my review by looking at the code, looking at the master plan, writing reports. And I look at my job as critical to provide all of the information that Planning Commission and the City Council needs to make the best decision they can possibly make. And so they are the policymakers and we are staff that tries to answer all the questions that we can. I put together a PowerPoint presentation and I'm a real simple guy when it comes to this stuff, so I'm not flashy, no animation, no audio or anything, but it'll, it'll give you a walkthrough of really what we've been going through in the process that, that the city has, has gone through in partnership with the Planning Commission. Planning Commission is a nine-member board, it's actually short of one board. And there, there are the citizens that the council appoints to review these very difficult issues and ultimately make a, make a recommendation. So I, I know everyone's familiar with the project. There is some, clearly some misinformation out there that I want to try and clarify through just a normal presentation of what I knew. You know, specifically there was a brochure that was circulated that is, is very full of erroneous information and it's not fair to you as residents, as you're reviewing a proposed application, to not have all, all the correct information. So that, that's what I'll try to do today. As the mayor said, questions, this, this isn't a public hearing, but as a small local unit of government, our council's always been fabulous in making sure that the public can, can be heard and can give their comments. There was a formal public hearing at Planning Commission level which was attended. There've been residents who have attended the work sessions prior to this. This would be the meeting where the council considers the recommendation of the Planning Commission. And again, it's a, it's not a public hearing, but it's, it's gonna be a public hearing because the mayor and the City Council have asked for that. Hopefully everyone in the lobby can hear. We remodeled council about six or eight months ago and we thought, well, this is never gonna happen, but let's put speakers out in the lobby in case we have a big agenda item and people are out in the lobby. So that seemed to work out pretty well for us. And the mayor has indicated that anyone here is gonna be able to talk under his direction and so those who are in the lobby, you know, you'll, you'll have a chance to get public comment. If you're interested in my PowerPoint, I'll, I'll certainly make it available. Shoot me an email or, or whatever and, and I'll give that to you. So we are here to talk about a planned unit development application, a, formerly or commonly known as a PUD. And a PUD is a type of zoning. It's a rezoning of the property from its current zoning to a PUD zoning based on a very specific development plan, which is the site plan that, that has been presented, has been available on our website. I had had some people come in, although not many, to come in and actually look at the plan and talk us through, talk us through the plan. So the PUD application process is a multi-step process. We're in the preliminary development stage, it's the first step, where the Planning Commission will receive the application, hold a public hearing, and make a recommendation on the preliminary development plan. That is what's before council tonight. But parallel to that, as council votes, they will, they will be considering the rezoning to that development plan. Okay? At, at the next step is the final development plan. So the developer has within 12 months of approval of the preliminary development plan to bring back a final development plan and that would incorporate any conditions that might be placed on the development from the City Council. And so that, that is up to a 12-month period. So I'll, I'll just move into, into that process. Along with the preliminary development plan and ultimately the final development plan, there's a legally binding agreement, it's called the PUD agreement. And it's a recordable agreement that'll come up on a title search and it'll, it'll talk about some of the more fine details of engineering, condominium documents, things such as that. So it ensures that whoever the owner of this project might be, whether it's the current developer going forward, someone who buys it in the future, or the condominium association, which would be the residents if it's approved, are bound by that PUD agreement. It runs with the land and is perpetual. So that, that is something that council will be considering, but, but tonight, or the vote on the preliminary development plan is probably the biggest step in this process. So council, under the code, can approve the plan, deny the plan, approve the plan with conditions. And if there are conditions placed on, on any approval, the developer has to approve those conditions in writing before we move forward. So with that, I just would like to move into the project. Again, I think you're familiar with it. This is on the old, the former Birch Body Works property, which is a 7.32 acre property, really combines, I think it's two parcels. One that is primarily wetland and one that is primarily upland. The zoning code discusses density based, based on net acreage. And I know there's some question that, well, half this property's not even buildable, so how could it be get, get density? That's how the code is written. It talks about the net density of the site. So we look at the entire site of the 7.32 acres. Of the 7.32 acres, the, the property that will remain open is 4.58 acres, or about 62 and a half percent of the property. And the density would be 6.9 units per acre. And I'm sure that developer will talk a little bit about this. Want to talk about the timeline for review, because I've heard, boy, why is the city rushing this? Why is it, why is it being pushed through? And in reality, the original submittal was October and the Planning Commission held a work session on October 23rd. And there are members of the Planning Commission here tonight. We welcome you and thank you for all of your hard work. Typically, the commission does a lot of the heavy lifting and a lot of the detailed review. So there was a work session on October 23rd. There was a second work session held November 13th. And actually, in November, the Planning Commission set the public hearing for December. After looking at all of the changes that were requested from the original plan, the developer got ahold of me and said, "I'm not gonna make the submittal for December. Can we hold this off a month? I want to make sure that I, I get everything that the commission asked for." So the formal public hearing on this was held January 22nd in front of the Planning Commission. There were separate meetings held with the neighbors of the city. I was not part of those, we weren't invited, we didn't attend, we were not part. I'm sure Mr. Burgler will address those, those meetings were appropriate. And then after the public hearing, the Planning Commission did vote to recommend approval after receiving the public comment. So that's what got us through, through tonight. When we, when we look at a rezone and we refer to our city's master plan, that is, it's not an ordinance, it doesn't have the rule of law, it is a guide. It helps the city and the Planning Commission. So we're, we've looked at a property before prospective developer comes in with their idea, because if it happens the other way, we see a proposal and we're reacting to it. So we developed a north sub-area plan, which is an amendment to the master plan and it's a, it's a specific area of the city that was reviewed. And it included the Birch site, the former tannery site, and Wolverine Engineering Building. If you're ever at Herman's Boy, you can see that. Looks like the old road commission building, because it is an old road commission building. So basically, that swath of town, from Main Street to Northland Street, we took a specific critical look at to help guide, we knew something's gonna go there, we know something's gonna be proposed there, including the tannery site and probably that engineering building. So the Planning Commission, who starts the process, has a, has a very public process to go through when adopting a master plan or amendment to the master plan. And there were public hearings held, there was a work session held, we asked for input when, when developing the plan. And that's something that's adopted by the Planning Commission and City Council. And again, it serves as a guide, it's a blueprint. If a developer came in and said, "We'd like to rezone this for a commercial strip development," and it'd sound ridiculous, but you open the plan and say, "Well, we did, that wasn't our vision for this project," and it usually doesn't go anywhere after that. And this is just the preamble to the master plan. It's intended to provide a common vision. Again, it's not an ordinance, but it's an important document. A common vision to guide the city's actions and policy toward a future which builds on strengths and addresses any shortcomings. Within the sub-area plan now, we have some general standards of what we'd like to accomplish in those areas. And they're, they apply to all the areas within the plan. And protecting the sensitive features as identified in the plan, protecting Rum Creek is critical to the plan, protecting vegetation, specifically next to the creek, keeping the creek shielded from sunlight is very important. That's a cold water creek that provides important habitat for the Royal River itself. Low-impact development standards, LID standards are what they're often called. And that, that deals with stormwater management in most cases. So trying to be innovative, trying to address the stormwater on-site in ways that we typically don't do it. What we normally do is we collect it in catch basins, send them through concrete pipes, and we find the best discharge for it. And in large developments, we'll create large detention ponds to hold the water. What you're trying to do is, is reduce sediment going into a creek or a river and improve the water quality and keep the water as cool as it costs for the town. Sidewalks and pathways are always important, there's the Rockford and with this area of town as well. And development flexibility. Zoning codes are zoning codes. And they say, "Your house has to be 30 feet from the front yard, 25 from the side, 15 from each area, it can't be higher than 25 feet tall. If you have to have a 10,800 square foot lot, go do it." And, and with PUD developments, it allows for flexibility. It allows for a commission and a property owner to look at what's best for this property, rather than turn it to page 100 and saying, "This is what you have to do." And we've had a lot of success with PUDs. The Highlands Development, Heritage Park Development, the Promenade, Herman's Boy. Herman's Boy wouldn't be allowed where it's at because it's a retail operation, but we went through a PUD process and it's a great location for it. And that was the only way short of rezoning that whole area of town, which then creates a retail district that's in competition with our downtown district and there's all kinds of issues with that. Sub-area plans guided the city towards a PUD development on this property. And then we related to the natural features, vegetation, Rum Creek. This is really important to us. And, and we reached out and the developer reached out in partnership with us. We talked to Trout Unlimited, Grand Valley Metropolitan Council, if you're familiar with them, they have an environmental division, and South Pete Environmental. Mr. Josh Viterbi, Josh, if you could raise your hand. Josh is, Josh is a great environmental consultant that we use. If you look at the Blakeslee Creek Rehab Project we did a year ago, from River Street to the river, very short area of creek, but, but an important area. And Josh did that whole restoration for us. So he's working for the city and advising us on this project and not, not only this project, but another project. And it's for the Birch property that I want to quickly go through. We looked at a lot of different types of uses and actually, the, the sub-area plan talks about it being a multifamily senior housing development and possibly combining it with the Birch, with the church property. So it did contemplate larger scale, multifamily uses. In this case, it talked about senior housing. It did, the plan does say that access to the site could be improved by connecting to Donald Street. We looked at two access points for any development that might occur on this property. The issue is the wetland, which is, the wetland on this site and the wetland on the church is, is greater than five acres, so it's a regulated wetland and you can't, you just can't put a road through there. So that, that really made that not a possibility with this property. Again, protection of natural features, extending the walking path. The plan does contemplate a historic building, special attention to the quality and type of building material, the aesthetics of, of the building material. And I know that's something that the developer talked with the residents about and continues to talk about perhaps making improvements if this moves forward. And maintaining significant open space. Environmental considerations. This is really important. I know for many years, we've, we've talked with residents on Monroe Street about the importance of, of the environment as a whole, which is certainly the case with the city, but this area with Rum Creek in the road and the properties, there was a Phase II environmental assessment completed and it, and it indicates there's significant contamination on the site. And I'll let the developer address that. It's not, probably unexpected, this is an industrial site. It had been operating as an industrial site in the middle of a residential district for decades. And it's not surprising, although unfortunate, that it is a contaminated site. To deal with that, the developer is proposing working through the city's brownfield authority. And that's a, a tool that the state gives us. And basically what you do is, it allows you to capture new tax revenue. So if this were approved and there were new tax revenues generated from this site, that, that revenue is captured and can be used for the environmental cleanup. And, and so the developer would have to carry those costs, would have to put those costs forward to clean up the site prior to development. And then the city wouldn't realize any new tax revenue from this for some time. I know I heard that the city was perhaps interested in this because we're gonna make millions off of it and first of all, it's not gonna generate that much tax revenue. But the revenue, the new revenue that'll be generated will be captured and used to clean this site up if approved. Eventually, once that is paid off, then there would be new tax revenue that would be generated. And that's a process we go through in the city's brownfield authority. The site would have to be brought up to residential cleanup standards per DEQ. My sense is if, if it were allowed and this, somebody proposed industrial, you probably wouldn't have to do any cleanup. But if you're putting people there and kids playing on, you know, on the land, you have to clean it up. And that's the highest cleanup standard that there is, the residential cleanup standards. And there's a state-of-the-art stormwater management system that it's been put forward. The original design oversized concrete pipes directly discharging into the river. And I know the developer will talk about the plans for stormwater management. And we got a big thumbs up from all of those who we reached out to. And Josh has taken that further and done the actual calculations, or reviewed the actual calculations. But for 97% of the, of the rain events, which is a typical one-inch rain, there wouldn't be water leaving the site. The larger rains, which, you know, it's almost impossible designed for the, for the big five inches that you get in, in an hour, there would be eventually, those basins, those swales would fill up to an overflow and go into the seething creek and the wetlands. Right now, most of that site, all of the site actually, I looked at the photos, from the wetland to the creek tips towards the creek. So right now, during a heavy rain, anything that doesn't soak into the ground flows right into the creek. And that is a contaminated site. So we've got it soaking into contaminated soil and flowing across contaminated soil into the creek. And, and that's a big issue and a very positive aspect of what is being proposed. Traffic has been a big issue and I'm guessing we're gonna hear about traffic tonight. So we, we did our due diligence and as I said at the beginning, our, our job is to provide the best information we can and use true data when, when we do that. Traffic study was conducted by the Rockford Public Safety Department. Chief Jones, the staff conducted that during school time. We wanted to look at traffic during, during the weekday during school, as well as during the weekend. And it was over a 14-day period, using a traffic analyzer, the tubes you put across, they can drive over, it counts the number of vehicles and the speed of the vehicle. And, and I had a couple people say, "Well, yeah, when you put that big sign out that says 'You are doing 45' and, and the speed limit's 25, people slow down." But we didn't put that out there. We just had the tubes across the road. So we just took true data. It wasn't anecdotal, it was exactly what the computer said it was. The average weekday traffic on Monroe was between 750 and 800 vehicles per day, weekday. Average weekend, it went down to 450 to 500 vehicles per day. 14-day average was 650 vehicles per day. And the speed, we're required by state law, we set speed limits by, this sounds crazy, what are, what are 85% of the people driving on that road? And that's what we have to set the speed at. And so we're, we're careful about doing speed studies because sometimes on a 25 mile an hour road, you do a speed study and it says 85th percentile's 35, you're supposed to reduce the speed limit. But the good news is that 85th percentile of those driving on Monroe drove between 20 and 25 miles an hour.
I doubt that.
So it's a, it's a lightly traveled, slowly traveled, sorry, I'm on a roll, I'm on a roll.
Go ahead.
Okay. And the police chief determined that there would be no negative traffic and safety concerns associated with this development. And this was presented at the public hearing at the Planning Commission. And, and those who attended said, "Well, we're not sure, we believe your data and the data is what the data is, but could you hire a traffic engineer?" Which Chief is one, but we hired a traffic engineer from a firm and gave him the raw data, exactly what it said. And this'll get a little nerdy. This, this letter is on our webpage, so if you go under Council Minutes and Agendas and you click on that, there's a lot of information about this, including the letter right from the traffic engineer, but I tried to summarize it for you. At the request of the residents, we hired a traffic engineer, Mr. Pete Lamore from Progressive A&amp;E. Progressive A&amp;E ran the, ran the traffic model using industry standards, conducting, and this is a new term I learned, a peak hour link capacity analysis. And what they do is they take the highest traffic count in an hourly period during that 14 days, which we found on a Monday morning, and we were speculating, maybe it was Babs, Babs and Donuts or something like that at Parkside, but there were 170 vehicles per day, when the average is between 80 and 100. So they, they capture that largest traffic volume of an hour and use that to run their analysis. They don't look at averages, they look at peak. And the study determined that at full capacity, if this were approved at full build-out, the level of service, LOS is the acronym they use, maintain a B rating from the current conditions of that to full build-out. That road on a letter grade A to F ranks a B. And the traffic engineer said that road on a letter grade A to F is, will be a B after this development. So he didn't see any appreciable change in the rating of that road at full build-out. And I think the developer will talk about this as a multi-year phase development, so it's not like it'll have it all, all at once. This is a paragraph that I thought was important. Says, "This traffic," and this traffic is that 170 vehicles at peak hour. "This traffic was added to that existing, worst-case, morning peak hour volume and a future conditions level of service analysis was completed. The output resulting from that calculation is shown on the second," we had all the data behind the narrative. "As shown, the level of service would remain at a respectable, as there were, level of service needed, even with projected traffic added. Perhaps another way of looking at this is to note that the project will result in, at most, one additional vehicle every two minutes on average during the one or two peak hours, and significantly less than that during all other hours. So according to the model and the analysis, which is what we have to work on with the data, during that peak hour, you can expect one additional car every two minutes, and significantly less the non-peak count." His summary, the very last paragraph, said, "The existing traffic and street characteristics of Monroe show that it is currently operating well within acceptable standards, and the traffic that is expected to be generated by the project is too low to create any significant traffic impacts. In short, the empirical information strongly indicates that this section of Monroe will continue to operate safely and efficiently with the proposed project fully occupied." So this is, this is the empirical data from the traffic engineer. This is not Michael Young, not Chief Jones, although I think they reached a similar answer to this question that Chief Jones did. I'm not trying to compare this for any other reason than to get the data. And if you look at the, some of the surrounding streets around Monroe right now, you've got that average between around 800 cars per day. Lewis Street right around the corner, true traffic is 1,100. Portland's 2,000, and that's in the residential area of Portland. Bridge Street in the residential area is 1,400. Fremont at 2,500. And Chief, I can't remember if that was in the, what area of Fremont that was in.
That was between Ten Mile and.
Ten and Cortlandt. So in the residential area. We tried to look at, we look at this as a neighborhood, maybe bigger than you look at it. We look at Cortlandt, we look at Bridge, we look at Fremont as, as the downtown neighborhood. And North Main is off the charts at 3,000. So that just gives you a look, if you're trying to say, "Well, I live on Monroe and this is how I feel Monroe is, this is what, what the true data is on, on the other streets around." Couple of things that have come up that I thought were important ahead, I've heard and I've read in this brochure, the sewer system isn't adequate. I don't know where that came from.
Do the traffic.
Absolutely.
I just had one traffic question that, because I know I had talked to you about the speed limit and you mentioned again that there was no sign put out there. Because I, and even residents have talked to me about, as soon as you see one of those, what do you do? You hit your brakes and you stop and you slow down. If you didn't, if we didn't have one of those up, how did you get the 20 miles per hour or 25 miles per hour?
You count the tubes. You hit two tubes.
From tube to tube? They measure the distance?
You measure the distance between the tubes and your computer takes that consideration into consideration.
Okay, just for clarification, because usually I see that, and I slow down. Well, because I always gotta slow down anyway. I was wondering how you got these numbers. Computer, if you see tubes, I gotta slow down.
I wanted to address the sewer system and again, I'm not sure where the information came from. We did have a resident, I don't think Mr. Winters is here tonight, who thought he had a sewer backup. Jamie's our Director of Public Safety, Public Safety, he's on the Public Safety Department, but Director of Public Services. The sewer in Monroe itself is brand-new. When we did this, the Lewis Street project, we ran a brand-new sewer in Monroe. Now, there is a sewer that runs between Monroe and Main Street, parallel to the creek. But Jamie, you looked up some backup data and could you share what you found or haven't found?
We went back as far as 2009, when we keep records, of citizens that called sewer backups, and we only have one on record. And that was actually in Homeward Lot 11. So since 2009, we haven't had any issues in that room.
We're very proud of our sewer system, which, you know, doesn't sound all that exciting, but we are very proud. Jerry actually asked me to touch on, on a grant we received, a million-dollar grant to do a complete analysis of our sewer system, televising, cleaning, benchmarking exactly what condition our sewer is. The sewer, the one between Main and Monroe is older, but we're not seeing backups on it. We did have issues maybe a while ago with, with flow, but we root treat that line and that's something you have to do when you're in an older part of town. But, but reality, what you get with a, with a line like this, is there's very little flow on that line right now. And so in the sewer system, if you don't have a lot of flow, the solids will settle out and just sit at the bottom of the pipe. And actually, more flow is better. You call that scolling velocity, you move the wastewater through a pipe and it keeps the pipe cleaner rather than having solids on the bottom. So I wanted to address the sewer system and we don't, we don't see any issue. What I will say is if we ever do have an issue anywhere in the city, we fix it and solve it. If there's an issue, it's not an issue because of the development, it's an issue because it just needs to be fixed. And we're very good with that on that. Impact on public schools, I can't speak for the schools, but I did contact Dr. Scheidler and Larry Waters at, at Parkside and they are not concerned whatsoever about the impact of this development on the schools. We did talk about demographics of condos, which are typically ages 50 and older, which typically don't have as many children. That's not to say that they couldn't all have kids, but they, there is no concern coming from the Rockford Public Schools. There, there is enough parking on-site where there would not need to be any parking on the street. That's, that's very, very important in the city, I think anybody living in that development. And the commission talks a lot about lighting, to make sure that lighting is shielded and directed down, and downcast on a neighboring property, so that'll be a big consideration going forward. And I already touched on the PUD agreement. There may be some things brought up tonight that you wouldn't put on a site plan, but that you wouldn't conclude in the PUD agreement that council will, will have to consider when the developer's ready to bring that forward. I drafted one, a framework, and we're just waiting to see what conditions that there might be. So with that, maybe a little longer than you were hoping for, but that's a general summary of the process that we've gone through and I know that the developer. Any questions?
Yeah, actually, I think I do have one. I'm not sure if this is very kind, but when we were talking about the acreage of the site in the two parcels, there's also a city, a city sale of some property.
A half acre.
And, and what was the purpose of, that why, why was this needed on this development?
I'll let the developer touch on that. I, I think it's, it's just probably an area of making the site work. I will say that from the public's perspective and all of us sitting here who own that property, that property is one of the properties that were identified as contaminated. And so from, from, from my perspective, it leaves us an opportunity to, to address a big liability for all of us sitting here in the room going forward that now we know about. If it's something. And so, from, from, from my perspective, it leaves us an opportunity to, to address a big liability for all of us sitting here in the room going forward, that now we know about, if it's something that probably happened fifty years ago, and Birch maybe didn't even know where their property lines were, but, um, that is one of the significantly contaminated areas of the site that, that we now all have, uh, have learned about as a liability. This would be a way to address that from a city standpoint. Perhaps a developer could address the question of the, the buy-in of the land.
Just one more question then.
Sure.
So would this, uh, development as presented be possible without that acreage, seed value?
I don't know, and I'll turn that to myself. The, the actual transfer of that property would happen in the PUD agreement, so we wouldn't be voting on that tonight. It would have to happen, uh, through a quick deed claim deed, uh, as part of the PUD agreement.
I'm just wondering, because some of the numbers that you mentioned as far as acres, the two sites total seven point three-two, and wetlands is four point four-eight acres. I'm assuming wetlands are unbuildable, um, leaving a two-point-seven-four, uh, area of property.
And I, you know, I'll, I'll let that, I will say, wetlands are unbuildable, but you can, you can remediate, and, and there are banks that you can buy land. Uh, we did that with the North Kent Sewer Board. We built on a large area of wetland, and we had to create new wetlands on a two-to-one basis. So it's not to say that wetlands can't be built on, and, and they can be permitted, but, um, let's say, uh, an acre were impacted here, as long as you create, and if, and if it's two and a half, which is the last regulation I read, if, if the developer were to get a permit to build on these wetlands, let's say fill in an acre of them, you just would have to create two and a half acres anywhere in, um, the Grand River watershed. So, um, that, that's, that's a process where you can build on the wetland, um, but not something we want to see.
And more cost than you build on.
Sure is. Mm-hmm.
Quick comment.
Just quick, I, I, I don't like to talk this, but growing up, uh, with my kids growing up, I always worried about what happened when Wolverines old factories and things got taken care of. What is the option if this does go through in terms of contaminated ground?
Good question. The owners of the property hold a liability, so it, um, it could, depending on what the developer, um, or the property owner decides to, it could just sit there. Thank you. Marcel, where, where, Prime Development, so she likes to, your presentation?
Well, thank you. Judge, do I face this way? Or this way? Really appreciate the presentation that the city manager made. Uh, and I may be liable to repeat some of those same things that he brought, it was quite expensive. Uh, so we are proposing today to build fifty-one homes, condominiums, that are owner-occupied. Uh, the land is seven point three-two acres. I know there's been some confusion about that. So we put up this map, and I don't know if you can, if all of you can see this or not, but the, uh, this northern part of the site is four point three acres, and the southern part of the site is three point oh-two acres, making it a total of seven point three-two acres. So these are the parcels that are included, just want to make sure that we know a bit about that. And then the city parcel, which there was a question about a minute ago, is identified on this board here, and it is actually half an acre, uh, approximately, and it is this little slice, uh, of, of the land. And would the development be possible with it? Probably not. It would be very difficult to do unless you go into the wetlands, which, as, uh, Mr. Lee pointed out correctly, it's possible, but not desirable, because you're really disturbing the ecosystem of all the water draining into the Rogue River. So that's just to eliminate the confusion about the size of the parcels. And we do have that six point seven-five acres, uh, under control, under Mr. Klinger, who's a common signature in holding ownership of, of those parcels. Uh, the proposed homes that we're, uh, we're going to build, are moving owner-occupied, and they will have property values that are similar or higher than the rest of the neighborhood. So, you know, this is going to be a very nice development, I think, because the chances of property values being higher are pretty significant. Um, how do you describe what we're gonna build, uh, which is shown on the screen there? Uh, I think modern urbanism, uh, people call this a pocket neighborhood. It's a neighborhood with a little bit higher density, people a little bit, a little bit closer together, and you typically see it in more urban areas. And you will see it in areas that are desirable, that have some walkability, where people can go like here, to downtown, uh, and, and, and do things. Um, who will you see living there? I think the, the comment was made correctly that mostly, these are, they're residents that will be about fifty-plus. Uh, some will be active, uh, people that already live in Rockford, or people moving into the city. Uh, these are gonna be your neighbors. Uh, they're gonna be the people that already live in the city, that are ready to downsize, that have an empty nest, that want to say, "Okay, we are ready to stay in Rockford, we love this community, we want to be here, um, but we're not necessarily ready to do the big yard renovations and all of those things that come with home mortgages." Uh, these people are gonna walk the dog downtown, they're gonna take the bike on the White Pine Trail, they're gonna walk to Herman's Boy right from this location, it's a great spot. And, um, I think we'll also see some younger families. This kind of concept is very popular, uh, with, with younger people who have kids. Uh, think about a single mom, I mean, what would be a better place to live than send your kid to the elementary school that's right here, walk across the creek, and you can see your kid at soccer play at night? I think it's a fantastic spot for that as well. Going back to history a little bit, uh, the site was indeed industrial, and it's been so since eighteen ninety-nine. Uh, we look back into history a little bit, and, uh, that must be. Yeah, am I going too fast? Am I going too fast?
No, I'm applying.
All right. Uh, and it used to be the Harder and Haskell wagon works, and in nineteen fifteen, thirteen, it became the Haskell Birch body works. And two, in nineteen fourteen, it became the Birch body works. So we've seen many years, basically for the same use, which was manufacturing of heavy trucks, school buses, and even more vehicles. Uh, the site has been vacant since two thousand and five, so it's been ten years now, and that metal manufacturing, painting, and all of that grinding and manufacturing that went on there, uh, for over a hundred and fifteen years, uh, brought actually a lot of contamination. People thought about waste quite differently than we do these days. Uh, so we found lots of very industrial debris, I mean, literally parts of buses. Uh, there was slag, which is a byproduct of burning, motor parts in the neighborhood. Uh, we did eighteen site tests, where we went and took soil samples, and the tests found that the site is badly contaminated, and it poses what the environmental, the experts call a contact risk for people. So the possible contamination, uh, that, the contamination that's there actually, uh, because of how the water drains over the site, as Michael pointed out, uh, causes risk already, not only to people that walk on the site, but also to the creek and watershed. We found two hotspots on this site, one of them, uh, like we were talking about, which is on the city property right here, and a hotspot is where there's a high area of contamination. And then the other one is here in this location. And in those two hotspots, uh, that exceed residential inhalation and contact criteria, uh, we found contaminants that include, and I'm, I'm not gonna be sure if I'm gonna say these, like, xylans, prime ethylbenzene, ethylbenzene, and naphtha. So these are present in those two particular areas. Uh, the eighteen test pits also found contaminated soils. Uh, there are heavy metals, chromium, arsenic, and volatile organic compounds such as benzene on that site. So you have a pretty contaminated site that is existing here in one minute. So one of the major benefits, I think, to this development would be that we're gonna clean that up. We will clean up those two hotspots, remove the contaminated soils to licensed landfill, and do additional remediation. The goal is to make it safe again for the children of Rockford to play on this site. And you are close to the elementary school, you're close to the community cameras, and Memorial Park, that's, that's these kids, having three boys, they're gonna be playing on that, on that site. And then, I want to talk a little bit about the public process, and, uh, Michael Young already touched on that as well, but we think that our development is consist, consistent with the city's two thousand and fourteen master plan, which was developed by the citizens of Rockford, by the planning division with public input. Uh, in that master plan, it says, "We want to preserve the small-time charm," but it also says, "We want to promote development in Sydney, Rockford." And it identified specifically the Birch Body Works site as, that I called, "One of three large development parcels in the city." And, as Michael Young said, the master plan's intended use for that particular site is to have it be a large-scale senior facility, a multi-family unit. First will be the indoor parking for carports and lawn landscape parking lots. The master plan also identified the need to keep open space, which we have, there's sixty-two point five percent of the site will be open. I think that particular board there is the best representation of what the open space would be. The southern parcel that is mostly vacant, will remain so. We made lots of revisions to our plans in the process that we made. Uh, residents expressed lots of concerns from day one. Uh, lighting was one of them, the car lights concerning the two neighbors, cars coming out of this development, how are they gonna line up with the neighbors? So we moved the driveway. Uh, Mark Miller, who's from that event, will address some of the lighting and some of the other issues. And we're also aware that parking, uh, can be, uh, a problem on North Monroe. And want to reassure you that our development has ample parking for every unit that's on-site. Well, you can pretty much see it on what's on board. Uh, we will have two parking spots for every single home that's on this site. So parking will be self-contained. There's not gonna be anybody from this side who's gonna park on North Monroe. And I know that parking is the biggest aggravation, at least from some, from some of the neighbors I met with that said, you know, a real problem is parking.
Could you, uh, address the parking a little bit more specifically, these parking places are?
Yes. Uh, so every unit has a garage. Uh, in this case, this one is accessible from the back, this is a two-story garage, and this is a two-story garage. So all the garages are internal to the units.
How tall are these?
And, um.
Hey, Marcel.
The, uh, the three-story building here has parking under.
Can you turn that way? Nobody back there can hear you, because you're not facing the microwave, or the microphone.
Uh, microwave. Uh, the, the, the parking basically is internal, uh, to most of the units, and under the, uh, the three-story building, it is under the units, and then there's a parking lot outside. But we will have two parking spaces per unit, so it should be sufficient for both residents and, yes, to park.
Could you explain what units don't have two-storied, or which do have one-storied?
It's really important during this that, that all questions go through the mayor and that, that we let the presentations be made, and then the mayor will.
Let, let the flow of the presentation flow.
Thank you. Does that answer your question? Thank you. Um, we talked a little bit about traffic. Uh, there's a concern that this will create additional traffic congestion. Um, I'm not gonna repeat what Chief Jones presented, or what the outside consultant for the city presented. Uh, I think that's been adequately addressed, I'm sure it'll be a question from that to, to the city. Uh, and then the last concern is density. We basically have fifty-one units on seven point two acres, so then six point nine units per acre. Now, when this clustered together, we think that's a desirable feature, we think people will like it, that's what makes it kind of an interesting pocket-type neighborhood. Uh, but the space, uh, is six point nine units per acre, so we're using it wisely, and it's not very dense by any means. Uh, there's one concern that was brought up to me the other day, with this, uh, three-story building being visible from the street. I went back to the site plan of Magic, it is one thousand, one thousand two hundred and fifty feet, feet back from North Monroe, so it's four hundred and fifteen yards. I don't think there's any way you're gonna be able to even see that building from North Monroe. Going on to, to the Rum Creek and Wetlands. Uh, we've been very careful to design a site plan that avoids any influence, negative influence on both the wetlands and on Rum Creek. Uh, we will not build in wetlands, and so we've been concentrated for that reason too, the development on the north side of the parcel. Uh, there's been lots of discussion about stormwater runoff. And I'm not sure if you're aware of this, but most of your current stormwater flows directly into Rum Creek. So what we are proposing here is a dramatic increase, uh, in environmental concern, with a, a stormwater proposal that's basically going to capture all of the rainwater on-site, filter it, and to have it flow underground back into the, the Rum Creek. The concern here, uh, is that Rum Creek is a cold-water stream, and it's attributed to the Rogue River. And to make sure that we did it right, we met with, uh, E. Colen Wolf and Power Limited, and we met with the city's consultant, Josh Sargyev. Um, and I think in a cooperative manner, really came up with a site plan that, uh, that Mark is gonna talk about, uh, in much more detail, contain the stormwater and take care of it in a manner that's not gonna harm your mind. The, I think these couple things, the, the units are called natural bio-retention and filtration sites, right? And, you know, you may ask yourself, "Well, who are these people are gonna live here?" Uh, and it's been really interesting, after Rockford's choir article came out on the development, I've had a lot of calls, and I've had a lot of interest. And I'll, I'll, I want to name one of the people, uh, that, that called me Todd Powers. Uh, he's a, he's a gentleman that's in a wheelchair, he, he rides a motorized power chair, he calls it, and he says, "Marcel, words cannot express how excited and hopeful I am that this development is approved. The idea of having accessible ranch-style homes so close to downtown is very exciting to me. It allows me additional opportunities to get out and socialize even with it." I mean, this man that lives in Rockford, he's been looking for a ranch-style home that is accessible, close to downtown, for years, he can't find it. So there is a real market for this property, and we will also have people moving in from the outside. Uh, I received a call from a, a government executive, uh, executive who recently retired. He manages an investment firm, he says, "Marcel, I know you always do a nice job." He said, "I'm very interested. I am so tired of schlepping myself up the East Beltline to see my grandkids' games." He said, "I'd love to go into downtown Rockford, this would be really convenient, it'd be nice, very accessible, sign me up." So in summary, I think we listen intently to the feedback from the planning commission. We listen intently to the feedback, uh, they made, we have made, uh, we made lots of changes to this development. I want to remind you that we came in originally with a partnership contract. While the planning commissioners, I know some of them aren't here, uh, made it perfectly clear to us that maybe that was not such a good idea. So, but a condo community, yes, that would be welcome. We made lots of changes. Uh, I think we did a very nice job, uh, to protect the wetlands, Rum Creek, and, uh, and efficient of this type of, you know, let's not ignore that this is gonna bring tax revenue to the city, uh, over time. The, uh, the, one other thing that I'm excited about is the ice skating pond, Bill Pond here. Uh, apparently this is used on and off during the winter for ice skating. And with any proceeds that the developer's gonna pay to the city to purchase this parcel are gonna be used to improve the skating pond. And I'm thinking lighting, benches, things like that, so it can actually become a community feature. And no, we will not own that property, that's gonna still be in the city park. So, in summary. So in summary, I've seen a letter from your own planning group. Two, two pages later from Jim Scales, I think he did a fantastic job of summarizing the whole development and what it would mean for the city of Rockford. He looked at the PUD, he looked at the master plan, he looked at traffic, he looked at compatibility, he looked at the protection of Rum Creek, he looked at the density of this project. His conclusion was, I urge the council to approve this project, and I can't say it anymore. I'd like to turn it over to Mark Miller, he's our urban designer, architect, site planner. And I think you could ask Rick philosophy to join him, who's also from his firm, Native Oil. They've done the engineering for the site plan, and they can help to tell you about the specifics. And after that, buddy Hyler, from Concept Design, will make a presentation on the architecture and on the design of the building. That's it, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.